Now call to order the April 14, 2020 Braintree School Committee meeting. Here at the Coleman School remotely, everyone else. People, thank you very much for tuning in. We're doing the best we can with the technology we have at hand. We're smoother, but at least we're meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting. We have time to, I believe, look at those. Okay, we're gonna, all right, so I'm gonna have to have a motion to table the meeting from our last, the minutes from our last meeting, as we do not prepare it as of yet.
So, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Dolan. You have a problem? Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Soros?
Aye.
Ms. LaMaire?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we'll have to look into Ms. Dolan. Ms. Dolan, maybe you can text or something to that effect.
Jen, can you hear us?
All right. All right, so we obviously, we tabled the minutes from our last meeting. Our second will be the public hearing on school choice 2020 to 2021. Dr. Hackett, please.
So, if we do every year, it will require by the state to opt out of school choice. The school choice, this is not the federal school choice program, this is a state's school choice program under Chapter 76, Section 12B, where school, non-resident students from other communities can go to a school system that is participating in school choice. We have, Braintree, to my knowledge, has never participated in school choice and it's mainly been because of the fact that we've not had the space to do it. That has not changed. Those circumstances have not changed, so for the 2021 school year, I would be recommending, as you can see from the recommended motion, to opt out of the Massachusetts School Choice Program for the 2021 school year due to lack of space for additional students. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on this?
No.
It's a pretty straightforward vote. I mean, it's always been handled that way. So, I guess I'll entertain a motion to, what do you say, not join the school choice for the fiscal year 20 to 21. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Ms. Dolan can hear us, and at some point in time, what I'll do is I'm gonna leave this meeting on my phone, call her directly, and put her on speakerphone, all right, so that we can, you know, hear what she has to say, it's important. So, I'll take a vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Soros?
Aye.
Ms. LaMaire?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. Dolan, I'm calling you in two seconds. Out of this meeting, so you're gonna see me drop off and I'll be going through your... All right, the motion passes. So, Ms. Dolan was trying to attempt. Okay. Can we just move on? Let's move on to our agenda. Routine matters, obviously.
We're going to go to superintendent staff.
Okay, we're looking at communications accommodations.
So, just under the administrative updates, well, from superintendent staff, the biggest reason we had the meeting tonight was to make sure that we took action on the cancellation of April's school vacation, which would be the Tuesday through the Friday, given that the Monday is still the holiday. With that cancellation, we could then shift the last day of school from, currently from June 25th, which is Friday, to Friday, June 19th. That calendar would go out. The four days of vacation week will be, will be student days, will be school days. Assignments will be, will go out to students, and will be, work will be expected back as part of our remote learning plan. So, that would give us the four additional days. Many school systems are taking this approach, making this decision. I think the feeling is at this point right now that even if we were to come back, to be able to get out on a Friday, as opposed to going the following week, and given the fact that we go to the 25th, which is very late in the year, would be a challenge in and of itself. If we aren't going back, which is obviously not decided yet by the governor or local community for us, namely, then we are able to end the school year a little bit earlier than we had previously scheduled. So, that's the recommendation. I would need to have your approval to do so.
So, I think everyone knows, if you didn't see the patch article, we're adding a few days. Sorry, the gentleman messed that up. So, we're amending our calendar to get out on the 19th, Friday, the 19th. I'll entertain a motion to enact that action.
So moved.
Motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Dolan, if you, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, excellent. Ms. Dolan, yea or nay?
Okay. Actually, I had a comment that I wanted to share before we voted.
By all means.
It seems, it seems to make sense to share it before we vote rather than after, but I had told a parent who reached out to me that I would share her feedback on this topic at the meeting, and her feedback was that while she's okay, and, you know, it made sense to her that we would continue our remote learning through vacation time rather than take vacation, she and a couple of others that I've heard from have expressed concerns about if we are in fact fortunate enough to go back. Her feeling was that she wanted as much time in the classroom as possible, and so shaving off those four days at the end of the year represented a concern for her. So, I just wanted to share that parent feedback with the group.
Duly noted. I think some people might feel that way. I think every decision we've been making has been on a daily basis. We will make any efforts to listen to everyone and go forward with that. Ms. Dolan, do you have a yea or nay on that?
Tom?
Yes?
Can I just, I know we have a motion, I know we have a motion on the table, but I...
Don't worry, we'll entertain discussion.
Okay. Thank you. I think one of the important things to understand, and Jen, I appreciate the comments, I've gotten some feedback as well. I think one of the important things to understand is we're kind, and we'll talk about this, I guess, next. We're on, you know, sort of a plan to have distant learning until May 4th, which is when the schools are currently closed, and, you know, if, if that continues beyond May 4th, I'm sure we'll have updates to that distant learning plan. So, I can understand the concern about having time in the classroom, but I guess I'm hoping that if the closure extends beyond May 4th, that we'll continue to refine and update the distant learning plan so that, you know, we can kind of address that, that concern.
I would just, if I could, Mr. Chair, for you, just to, this is Superintendent Frank Hackett. I also hear and appreciate the concern. I think the, you know, the challenge is that if, in fact, we were to come back on May 4th, that, you know, we're gonna have, clearly, there's gonna be a lot, there'll be a lot of decisions about how, how students re-enter the building, how staff would re-enter the building, and the, what we do with that time period from May 4th to what would now be, with an approval on this recommendation, June 19th, would mainly be partially just to make sure that students are back on track and make sure that we end the school year where we want students to be. And that's the case also if we are still with our remote learning plan, but that touch base, which is what we do recognize, students not seeing friends, students not seeing their teachers, teachers not seeing their students, it's been difficult for everybody. So, you know, I do think, while I do appreciate the fact that we are taking four days off the year, I do think that the, the time from May 4th to June 19th is gonna look a little different anyway, and a lot of it, some of it will be reconnecting and, and kind of gaining our footing with kids again. So, I still think it's the right decision to move forward with this, because it's, in this scenario where we don't come back, it is, it would be good to wrap up the school year on the 19th instead of going the following week.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Kelly, hi. Yes, I want to say that I agree, I think that given the situation, you know, our current situation, I think it makes sense to do that. Also, you know, if, if we do go back, which is probably unlikely, I think that, you know, MCAS has been canceled, so there would, there would be, you know, time for, for learning if they did go back, but I think given the situation with what we know now, I think it's, I think it's the right decision.
Mr. Mayor, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We did have a motion by Mr. Chafe. I'll start the roll call. Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Okay, and aye. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Soros?
Aye.
Ms. LaMaire?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It passes. And to kind of piggyback on that, you know, but this is an extremely fluid situation. We reserve the right to go back at a later date and change, if need be, don't we?
Because you're out.
Because we're out? Okay. You know what I'm saying? If some macro shift happens.
But the issue would be that these are, these are days that SCAP will be paid for.
Of course.
Right, right.
And that takes into account, I'm just saying that this is a little...
It is a fluid situation, and I think Ms. LaMaire had a great point about MCAS. Generally, we would be heading in, we're in, we would be in MCAS season, which is an awful lot of school time, so to not have to manage that and would give us more contact with students.
We do have an amended date, the 19th. We'll put that out ASAP. Not a secret, so to speak. What's on our agenda?
Oh, just to give you an update on remote learning, Mr. Assistant Superintendent is on the line, and he's gonna walk you through just kind of a bit of an update as to where we are right now.
On the line. So, good evening all, hope everybody's doing well. Just again, to bring you up to speed from the last presentation you had on the remote learning plan, over the past week, teachers and staff across all the levels have been trying to reach out to families, reconnect with students, and mostly trying to ensure that all students have the ability to engage in the online activities and the online learning that we have been rolling out. In that effort, a large part of it has been the continuation of trying to make sure that we're getting the technology that kids and families need into their hands so they can all participate. We've had some outreach beyond our initial forays into trying to determine who needed some help. We've gone to phone calls and other ways of communicating with specific families to really find out what their status is and what they need, and working on delivering those goods to them. So, in the last week, we've kind of shifted from a centralized dispersment of devices and internet to a site-based dispersment of devices and internet, and where necessary we'd be in the head staff delivering devices and internet access to families in their homes when they can't get to us. Part of this effort as well has been to ensure that we have a tracking system to make sure that we connect with all the students, and to be able to make sure that we're evaluating the work from everybody who submits it and get it back to them in a meaningful way. In terms of what is actually going on from an instructional standpoint, both the high school and the middle school started their online instruction on April 8th. Students who are very familiar with the platform are receiving lessons and materials through Google Classroom. We've been using that for several different years, and as they submit work, feedback will be given by teachers on a weekly basis as we move forward. Most recently, Braintree High School has issued some information to families about how the credit or no credit at the high school will function. If you have not seen it, in essence, students who have already received grade quarter one and quarter two will have their semester grades as they actually are, meaning an A, B, C, that type of grade. That will also calculate towards the GPA on a 2.5 credit basis. If you're familiar with the math, it's weighted by the number of credits and the grade that you receive. From the beginning of the second semester to the end of the year, it'll be on a credit, no credit basis, and feedback will be given to students about how they're performing in that context as we move forward. This past week, elementary students were still working on materials that academic directors had provided, which allowed our elementary teachers to co-plan by grade levels within schools. Also, to reach out to those families and students, make that reconnection, to make sure that, you know, we're beginning the process of identifying anybody who was unable to participate with us. And they also, some of them needed to do a little additional work on preparing their online platforms, and at the elementary level, we'll be using one of three: Google Classroom, Class Dojo, or a software called Bloom. And then as of tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., elementary teachers will be delivering the lessons that they've created to their grade levels through these online platforms, and will begin providing feedback to students on the work that they'll submit. Just to give you just an overview of kind of how we've envisioned elementary lessons, throughout the course of the year, obviously, in classes, we're trying to cover standards, and so there are many standards that the state by subject area provides us, and so in essence, we've refined that down to what we consider to be the power standards, the most important, critical pieces that we think students need to learn in order to progress in their education and get ready for the next grade. What you see on the screen is an example of the elementary science power standards, and you can see the standards by the dates that we'll be covering those. So, teachers have been developing lessons and activities for the week of 4-6 to 4-14 and 4-15 to 4-21, on that standard of gathering data and making observations. On the far right, you can see the objectives that we're gonna try to cover. So, this is the template that our teachers used as they created their lessons that will be delivered to students through the online platforms. And obviously, for every subject area, there's a similar power standard list. Throughout the course of the week, academic directors and elementary principals have been working collaboratively to make sure that these, these priorities are the ones that we think are the most important, and then grade level teams have been working with building administrators and academic directors, again, to form those lessons and activities related to these standards, so that all grade level students within a given site will be experiencing the same type of lessons and activities. As teachers receive work from students, we will prioritize giving feedback in the subject areas of math and ELA and those standards, but please know that also lessons and activities will cover all the other subjects as well: social studies, science, phys ed, art, music, and wellness as well. So, that's kind of where we stand right now, happy to entertain any questions that you might have, but this is an overview of where we are today.
We have any questions or comments? I have a few. I thought it was funny that I'm now involved with helping my daughter out with her physical education as far as walking for 30 minutes a day.
That's for you, Mr. Devon.
That's why it was addressed to Tom, huh? Thank you, Jim. Greatly appreciated. Thanks for going so soft. And looking at some of the work that she's had to produce, I think it's just right on. It's enough to let them know that it's a serious situation, but not so easy that, you know, there can be, shall we say, a group working on it. I looked at the lesson plans, and I'm impressed with what we've been able to put together in a short amount of time. Please, please give my kudos to the directors and the individual teachers in what I think was a monumental job done by all. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, and as has been mentioned several times, this is our, our beginning, and so as, as time goes on, we'll continue to refine this work to make sure that we are providing the best educational experience that we can to students.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No, just thank you.
Okay. Moving on, where are we? Administrative updates, which is subsection 4C. Not to hap...
Sorry.
No worries.
You know.
We're getting through this.
We're getting through it. Okay, just a few things. One, I do need to, you know, last minute donation we were fortunate enough to receive from the American National Red Cross, a donation of 100 HP Pro tablets. These are Windows-based tablets, but, and that, we're not really a Windows-based tablet shop, but the tech department evaluated the devices, they're in great condition, and there is no question that we can make them work, certainly with our virtual learning plan. So, with that, I would first of all express appreciation to the American National Red Cross for the donation, but I would ask for your approval of 100 HP Pro tablets.
I'll move to accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Kokoros. I'm looking for a second on that, if I may. Second by Mr. Chafe. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Soros?
Aye.
Ms. LaMaire?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you to the Red Cross, obviously, we're gonna send some type of thank you note.
Absolutely. Very generous donation. So, it's been referenced a couple of times, and I just, I just put this on just to say that I've been watching more press conferences and sitting on more conference calls, and like here to admit, and there's been a lot of kind of dancing around question about whether or not we're gonna come back to school on May 4th. And the last press conference the governor held, he stated that, which is consistent with how he's talked about it before, that he will make the decision about whether he's gonna close schools statewide by the end of this month. That's not to take away local authority and the school committee, it could, could make that decision independently if, if it wanted to, and I'm just putting that out there just so that people understand that while the governor has the authority to shut down statewide, local school departments do have the authority to make that decision on their own as well. My hope is that the governor makes a decision sooner than, you know, the end of the month. Clearly, it would be beneficial for families to know, for certainly for school systems to know prior to that, to fully understand what we're, what we're facing. So, I just wanted to bring that up, if you weren't kind of paying as close of attention, but he has not given a date certain on when he will be making that decision. And finally, I just wanted to mention again the great job that our food services department is doing with Grab and Go, breakfast and lunches. We, on, on Thursday of last week, we served 550 children, which represents well over 1,000, almost 2,000 meals, and that program continues to see steady participation. We've also, we're fortunate through the mayor's office to have received some, some bread, more bread than we know what to do with, but we're very grateful for it from Stop &amp; Shop. We're currently housing it in a, in a freezer at the high school, and will be likely giving out some of that, holding on to some of perhaps too for March Christmas Center and other, other locations within the town. So, it's one more example of just the partnership that's been going on with the town, with mayor's office, the mayor, around how we try to really, trying to take a whole community approach to this health crisis. And I would just finally just say that we've, our food services director, Sarah Coughlin, who's just done an excellent job, applied for four grants now, and we received word last week, I believe, it was last week, that we received a $5,000 grant, so she was successful in, in one of the grant applications. That will go toward helping our, our Grab and Go program, and just to clarify that the program is not use summer funding, that the summer food services program we run is independent of this, but basically, in order to be able to get some reimbursement for the Grab and Go program for our free and reduced students, we had housed the Grab and Go program at Hollis and Ross, which were approved by the feds for summer food programs. So, that's the connection to the summer program, but the funding itself is coming through our food services budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that if anyone has any.
I believe we're in to subcommittees, our finance and operations subcommittee. Mr. Kokoros, if you could?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a little background noise there.
It's usually... I don't think it's on.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've talked about over the last couple of weeks since we've met, you know, obviously the situation that we're dealing with is very uncertain, and we're continuing to look at how to put together, you know, the, the correct budget for the next fiscal year. So, I had the opportunity today to listen into a hearing with the state Ways and Means Chairs, both the House and Senate, on, on just the economic impact of what's going on. So, they had a lot of folks testify, and I think what we heard, at least over and over again during this three-hour session that they had, was that most of the news that's coming in is very sobering. I think that comment was probably made multiple times, and obviously, during this situation, some things that they talked about were, you know, tax payments, lottery revenues, and many major sources of revenue are down. They're expecting that there'll at least be a deep recession, and that's if the economic activity resumes in June, which at this point is still an unknown. Then just some of the statistics they threw out were, the general gross domestic product is down 7.5%, and that could continue to decline again if the situation goes much beyond June, and the unemployment rate in Massachusetts rose to 15% last week with new people filing. So, you know, again, the word sobering is, is pretty relevant to the things that they brought up today, and one of the things that they talked about quite a bit is, and as we've all heard, you know, the federal government had, had to take kind of an aggressive approach to try to stimulate the economy, and, you know, it was obviously appreciated, and we're trying to figure out how that, you know, how that impacts us, but that significant step that they took, again, will not be enough if the situation goes much beyond the month of June. So, you know, those are kind, those are some of the things that we're, we're listening to and we're following, and obviously, they have an impact eventually on how we put together our numbers. So, we're gonna continue to, continue to monitor the situation, listen to what the experts have to say, look at, you know, what the revenue picture looks like here locally, but, you know, obviously, the sooner that the, the conditions and the economic conditions return to normal or semi-normal, you know, the better the news will be as far as some of these shortfalls in revenue. So, we just wanted to kind of give the committee an update on that. You know, there was a lot more economic talk about what kind of a recovery we'll see, you know, V-shaped, L-shaped, all those things, which, you know, we can talk about, but the Finance and Operations Subcommittee will meet again on Thursday of this week, and we'll continue to put forward with the best knowledge that we have, a budget that will address the needs of the school system for fiscal year 21. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Kokoros. I look forward to having a lively discussion this coming Thursday as to where we are and where we believe we'll be. Thank you, sir.
Just a reminder on public comment, next on the agenda, that you can call the office, and also you can email us at braitreesholes.org. We'll do the best we can to get back to you. And with that, Mr. Chair, I believe...
Does anyone else have any announcements or any comments? Does anyone else have any announcements or any comments?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Chair, if I may.
By all means, Mr. Kikoris.
Just want to send our condolences out to Butch Sterns and his family. They lost their mom, Ginny, this weekend. And, you know, the Sterns family has been, you know, a significant part of Braintree, and we want to, again, send our condolences, and hopefully, you know, we'll see Butch and the family soon.
Yes, Ms. Sterns, Mrs. Sterns, excuse me. When their father passed away, they did quite a bit for the schools in the great Braintree area with their golf tournaments and whatnot, and have given scholarship monies out for many years. Obviously, our deepest condolences to Butch and his family. Any other comments from the people? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved. Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Soros?
Aye.
Ms. Lemire?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chase?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are now adjourned. People, thank you very much. I really appreciate the fact that you've all been very flexible with this, and we'll try to keep you informed as we can going forward. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.